Okay, I call this month's October Rail Committing Meeting to order. Robert, can we get a roll call?
Yes, Chair K?
Here.
Member Dudley?
Here.
Member Ringham?
Jack Ringham.
I don't have him yet. I do have somebody that just joined. I'm going to unmute them just in case. In the meantime, Member Conlan?
Greg?
Greg is here.
Yeah.
Greg, are you here?
You're here?
He was here a second ago.
I see him.
It's not responding.
Greg, say here.
Putting doors on flyers.
Hey, Jack is here. That's his telephone number. I just checked it.
Okay.
752... Well, maybe not.
Okay, well, we'll continue and get back. Member Jones?
Here.
Member Dexter? You? Member Janz?
Here.
Member Mobek?
Here.
Member Massey?
Here.
Okay, so the person that tried dialing in dropped off. When they come back on, so the members that are not present as of yet are Ringham and Dexter.
I don't think I said I was here, but I am.
We got...
Okay, let's move on to, move on to public comments. I don't think we have any members of the public here except Roland, but I don't know if Roland wants to make a public comment.
Yeah, Roland, if you'd like to make a public comment, why don't you raise your hand and we'll be able to unmute you at that point in time. Okay, he does not have his...
Okay.
...hand raised.
I see a hand up.
You see a hand up. I do not.
Okay, well, let's move on. Roland will do a presentation anyway. If he has something additional, say, he can mention it there. Approval of minutes, so we have the August 4th minutes that were sent to you. Are there any amendments or changes people want to suggest? Hearing none. The minutes are approved as...
Do we have a motion in a second, please?
Okay.
Okay.
Who was that?
Jones.
Is there a second?
This is Jim. I'll second. Jim, Janz?
All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes have been adopted.
Alex, I'd like to make a comment. I mean, the minutes are fine. But in one of my first meetings, I sort of complained about the quality of the minutes and said that they were so cursory that you didn't learn anything. But I would say that the minutes from this meeting were just exactly what I was looking for. They're complete and they're useful. So, thank you, Robert.
Sure. Okay, so we have Roland going to give his presentation. And so you should have that on the screen. Roland, are you, I think you're unmuted, so why don't you go ahead?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. You know, when you need me to advance the slide, right now it's on the title slide.
On the first one. Yeah, I can see it. Thank you. So, thank you for having me this evening. I'm going to spend next couple of minutes talking about a potential Redwood Junction station. But before I go there, I need to introduce you basically to its sister station in London. Next slide, please. So that's the station in London. And you can see London's on one end and the other side, when it says Paris, actually the direction to is the Channel Tunnel. And there's something very interesting about this station is that there is another one. She's part of the same station with an oblique platform that you can see in the curve that goes to a place called the Midway Towns, which is where I used to live. And that basically is the equivalent of Dunbarton Rail. And then also at the top on the left, you can see another line. That is the old line that is still in use now. This is how the trains get to Waterloo. So those of you that took, you know, Eurostar between 1994 and 2004, that's the way you used to get to Waterloo. That's it. Next slide. Oh, yeah, the only thing on this slide here is that you can see there's a ton of parking and a lot of anything else. Next slide, please. So here's the equivalent for Redwood Junction. At the bottom, what you can see are the existing passing tracks with two platforms, one on each side. They are 1,400 feet long, which makes the station ideal for the high-speed rail to stop mid-peninsula with something that we always wanted to do. What this also brings is that you don't have to go all the way to downtown Redwood City and make a U-turn to get back onto Barton Rail. This proposal is of great interest to Redwood City. And recently, I found out it's also of interest to Palo Alto because neither are, neither one of them want passing tracks to their downtown. And, oh, yeah, the other thing about this station is actually it is very, very close to Stanford. It's actually within walking distance of Stanford. If they don't want to have a shuffle. Next slide, please. So this is what the station actually looks like. And I got again into a little bit more detail on the next slide, which is the last one. You can see the curve platforms to the right. And you also see the box. And what's interesting about this box is that that box costs $40 million. So think about that. And you can actually see a little blue train stopped at the bottom. It's not Eurostar. It's a local high-speed train. One thing that's interesting with the platforms to the right is this is where they transferred from 25,000 volt overhead catenary to third rail. Because everything further east from there is third rail. Last slide, please. And this shows you the layout of the station. So you have got the two platforms, five and six, which is local. This is how basically the local trains switch to the high-speed line, get into St. Pancras. It's nice to see straight on this slide, but it isn't in real life. And then you've got the other platform, which is obviously going to be very different with what we are proposing at Redwood City. Because we're not going to have a central platform. This is, we say platforms two and three, that's where the passing tracks are going to be. And you can see the inside, you know, seating areas, little cafe, little shop. Very simple. And also you can see the connection between what would be Dunbarton Rail, in our case, and the main line between San Jose and Francisco, when it says walkway, walkway to platforms five and six. And I'm done. Thank you very much. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Roland, if we go back to the map on what I think was your second or third slide?
Yeah, if you do that.
Not that one, the next one. Where is the Atherton Town Line in that slide?
The Atherton would be one mile down from where it says San Jose in the red box at the bottom on the right.
Okay.
What are you trying to show us, Roland?
I'm basically trying to show you something that the High-Speed Rail Authority is not considering.
Not considering?
No, they're not considering this. Not, I've actually suggested, when you come to the next item on the agenda and you look at the comments I made for the EIR, this is one of my scoping comments. It's just not there. It's not in the draft EIR.
Well, what are they proposing?
They're not proposing to stop anywhere. They, they are also, when we come to the next item, they're proposing to a full track at Millbury, which doesn't make any sense either. They've actually got a memo, an internal memo that says that, no, it's not required.
I think Caltrain might be considering, well, when they had, Facebook was interested in funding the Dunbarton Extension. They were thinking of doing something near the junction, a station around here, correct?
Yeah, I don't know if Sebastian's on the line, but I've been going back and forth with Sebastian on this. And absolutely, it makes a lot of sense than the front $3 billion boom, that's on the table, that's destroying Highway 84 downtown Redwood City and God knows what else. This, what you're making out here, to me, is the only thing that has made sense over the last 10 years.
And Caltrain owns all the land and kind of in the middle of that triangle?
That's a great question, and I didn't have enough time to put the slide in. The bottom half of the light of way belongs to Caltrain, when you see the platforms. And then when you look at the top, you can see like a gray area, you know, between that yellow platform and the buildings. That actually belongs to Sam Trans.
Okay. Yeah, there's, I think there's existing buildings there, so if they own the land, it'd be easier to turn that into...
Bill's Martin Development has a lot of that property.
Yeah, let me explain to you something else. You can see that where these big 1,400-foot platforms are, my guess is that they're actually going to be moving further south. The reason why we parked them there for the time being is because of this loop that you can see. That's basically coming from the south and heading towards Dunbarton Rail that Union Pacific might decide to keep, you know, for whatever reason. So we didn't want to, you know, put anything up there that might basically kill the project, you know, before it even got started.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Roland or any comments? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much, Roland. Okay, let's move on to the next item. Pull this up here. We're at 5A, the Caltrain update. Robert?
Yeah, so just a couple of items. Caltrain is slowly moving forward, but I think probably the biggest item is Measure RR, which did approve to be on the ballot since our last meeting. And so that is there for a 1/8 sales tax to fund Caltrain in all three counties, San Francisco, San Mateo, and Santa Clara. Additionally, about a week or two ago, yeah, about almost two weeks ago, Caltrain was out doing an EMF survey, basically measuring existing conditions so that they can do their comparator for the electrified system. And I don't know if you've noticed it, but there is one pull-up near the park. So that's basically it on the generalized update.
Haven't seen the new poll, but I'll be on the lookout next time I walk by Holbrook Palmer.
Yeah, so if you take the trail between Watkins towards Felton or towards the tennis courts, you'll be able to see it there.
Okay, so it's farther toward the Vanloom Park area, hasn't come to, okay, okay, that's probably why I didn't see it. Are there any questions or comments for the Caltrain update?
Yes. Do you have a revised date when they expect to have service on the line? They're obviously way behind.
Yeah. I think after our last meeting, I think Caltrain had a few items on their agenda related to change orders with Balfour Beatty, which I think Roland mentioned before. But we haven't gotten any feedback from Caltrain on an updated schedule, nor direct information as to when they're going to come back into town to finish off foundations and put up the rest of the polls.
Paul, I'm going to go out on a limb and predict all this information you'll hear right after the election. For some reason, I'm predicting it'll come right after the election. Don't know why, but I think it's going to come then.
They will admit to all their faults after they've got the money secured.
It's a reasonable plan. They got no money.
I didn't say that. I'm just making a prediction. Okay.
This is highly speculative. And I'm not sure there's any useful discussion we could have around what I'm about to say. But I think the chances of that proposition RR losing are very good. If I had to bet right now, I would bet they're not going to get the money.
John, I totally agree with you. There's enough of this tax stuff and the current economic situation, I think they're going to have a tough sell to get this passed.
I mean, the Almanac just came, or the Post just came out in an editorial against it.
Yeah.
I don't know what some of the local papers in the other counties are saying.
The San Mateo Journal is a yes.
And then they, if they, you know, they've been saying, if we don't get the money, we're going to shut down. Now what?
Well, we'll find out.
Since they have a mere shadow...
Go ahead, Jim.
Since they have a mere shadow of their former ridership, if they shut down, it's affecting a lot fewer people than it would have been if they had shut down a year ago.
What's it going to do to the progress on the electrification project? Anything?
They got $1 billion for the electrification. I mean, the RR is only 100 million. So I don't understand why 100 million is going to destroy a billion.
Well, it may not. I don't know, but it just, I don't know what they mean when they say they're going to shut down. I don't understand why if their ridership is down to 5%, they're still running 40-some trains a day with six empty cars in each one. It makes no sense to me.
Let me give a chance if anyone in the public wants to give public comment on 5A. Okay, hearing none?
This is Roland.
Go ahead, Roland.
Couple of things. So first of all, they're, right now, they're running 72 trains, not 40. The real reason their ridership has tanked is because they stopped running baby bullets. It's very simple. So I made it very clear to Mr. Hartnett that unless we restore ridership back to 10% or more, just like every other where we're going to have some seriously unpleasant conversation Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Roland. Okay, any other comments on Caltrain before we move on? It's not 5B?
All right, so thank you, everybody, for your help and support in approving the comment letter to High-Speed Rail and the HSR. Yeah, D E I R and E I S. The document was approved by council to be sent with, I think there were a couple of minor changes. You have a copy of the letter, the final letter that was signed and sent off. You also have a public comment that was provided by Roland in terms of the comments that he had made to the EIR as well. If you haven't gotten it, it's accessible on our website under the item. Right now, the High-Speed Rail Authority is, with their environmental consultant, going to be compiling all of the comments that were received and working those through the process of review. And they are required to address each comment in some fashion as they move forward towards approval of the final environmental document. And I think the timeline that they gave us was about a year from now.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff? If not, any public comment?
Okay, this is Roland. So I don't know if you had the opportunity to read my comment letter. I'd like to walk you very briefly through it. So right off the bat, they've got two blatant violations of Prop 1A. And the first one is that they are going to the full-thinking graveyard, this transbe terminal. And the second one is that they're proposing to do San Jose, San Francisco in 48 minutes of 30. Then I got a bunch of comments. They want to put community education towers. The thing they don't understand is that once they transition from the dedicated high-speed line in the Royal to Union Pacific right away, they're supposed to be switching to the same IETM signaling system as Caltrain. So I put that out there. Briggs Bayne doesn't need a maintenance facility. We got a transbe tube. Then it gets very technical about what's going on with transbe, the platform basically 400 feet too short. Then I touched on this earlier. There is no need for passing tracks in Millbury, and I got the link to their document that explains why not. And then we discussed this earlier as to how the Redwood Junction station, which is what I mentioned earlier, that station eliminates the need for passing tracks in Redwood City and in Palo Alto. Then there's a discussion about intrusion detection. This is mandatory with quad gates. I hope that all of you know that. You cannot have a car track between the two gates, so that's mandatory. And, yeah, the one, the big one to everybody, and that's all the way from San Francisco to the Royal, is that they're not planning to operate trains at speed in excess of 125 miles an hour. What that means to all of us is that they do not have exclusive rights for environmental clearance. Anybody else can do this, like Caltrain could be environmentally clearing everything between San Francisco and Gero. Quite frankly, that's what I'm pushing for, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Roland.
I do want to note that Jack Ringham did join.
Yeah.
Hello?
Hey, Jack.
Hi, Jack.
We're in 5B right now. So are there any comments from the committee on this HSR update, EIR update? Okay, if not, let's move on to 5C, the Atherton Station Closure Proposal.
Okay, so the proposal for the Atherton Station Closure has been moving forward, as you all know. At last week's council, council meeting, there was a discussion of the draft memorandum of understanding and the draft maintenance and use agreement with, related to one of the terms where in the town would take over, take over the the use of the current station property, which actually extends from Fair Oaks Avenue down to Maple. It doesn't encompass the existing station building, parking, as well as a narrow strip of land that goes down towards Maple. I think you all have had an opportunity to look at that memorandum of understanding and the maintenance and use agreement, which were attached to last week's council report. Direction was received by staff with regards to some of the terms and tightening some of the terms of the agreement up. And a final version of the maintenance and use agreement, as well as the memorandum of understanding, will be moving forward to the city council, likely at their next council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Robert.
Comment?
Questions first and then...
Well, I just wanted to congratulate Robert on the piece of staff work. I thought that was beautifully done.
Yeah, this is Jim. I would agree with that.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Greg.
I have a question, too.
Okay.
First, I don't understand why they completely left out the $28 million that was authorized by the Transportation Authority 10 years ago to do the holdout station. That money was appropriated and it was funded in the TA budget. They spent about 2.7 million. And there's completely ignored in the history of the agreement that that money was even involved. I mean, it's just sad that they completely ignored the fact that the TA funds were allocated to build it. They just never got around to spending them. And eventually they used them, well, I don't know, they got 400 million in the bank. So I don't know how much of that relates to the holdout station in Atherton, but there's a hell of a lot of money in the TA that's never been spent. And I think some of that relates to the, to the holdout station in Atherton. And I, in the letter, they talk about getting away, doing away with the platforms. And I don't understand why they're doing that if they're going to shut the station down.
I think it's for safety.
With regards to the removal of the platform, there's a couple of reasons. Number one is, is that in terms of closing the station, there are a few aspects of that. One is fencing off the right-of-way, which is included in terms of both temporary fencing and a more permanent decorative fence. But the removal of the platform and the access crossings further assist with closure of the station, but they also will reduce the likelihood of people in that center platform area, which results in train and, as you may recall, one of the impediments to a quiet zone in that area is the station and the access crossings. And so by removal of those, the the quiet zone can start moving towards an extension as well as with the installation of the four quadrant gates at Watkins.
Well, if they're going to remove the middle platform, it looks like it would be, we could operate the train again without the holdout problem. Because they, all they have to do is board the trains from the outer sides and they, you know, and they would be ready to go. But I'm not sure that's what their intent was, but I, you think it was just safety that they felt that they needed to do it?
Well, I think you're trying to, you're mixing maybe a couple of things. If you're saying boarding from the other sides, then the north, north, sorry, a southbound, northbound platform would be required to be constructed.
Yes, but it wouldn't be a big, a major expense. The other thing, the one word in the agreement itself, that I, and I can't find my notes. Oh, maybe here they are. On attachment three of the MOU on had proposed action supporting the closure, and they had three bullets. And the third was implementation of grade crossing safety improvements at Watkins, potentially including installation of quad gates. And I'm not sure what the significance is of the word "potentially." I mean, why is that in there? That sentence would read much better without it. Installation of the grade crossing safety improvements at Watkins, including installation of the quad gates, rather than potentially including. So I don't know whether that's, is there a story there, Robert, that I'm privy to?
No story.
Why did they put it in?
This is Jack Ringham. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I think the reason they put it in is to cover their bases in case they don't do anything.
That's what it reads to me, and that's why I think it's in there. And I think it's crazy to leave it in there. If I were the board or the council, I would insist on that being removed because you're giving them an out that they should not have.
Is this something we could pass on to our legal counsel, Robert? Actually, there's no action, so I'm not sure we can...
There is no action. I'll take the comment as noted.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I would make...
Yeah.
Can Jim ask this question? Or unless, John, you have something to add about the, about Greg's comment or question?
Well, I think it's an extension of Greg's comment. I mean, the word "potentially" is just one indication of the fact that I think there's an awful lot of wiggle room in this agreement. I mean, if I go to the sort of wherethas thing... I mean, if I go to the sort of whereses thing that introduces the whole thing, item O, I think, says J P B is committed to, is committing to seek funding to support these things. Well, big deal. Of, and I mean, I sat through the study session a week or so ago. And several of the council members raised the question of, and maybe this falls in your court, James. Jim, uh, you know, is a memorandum of understanding a contract? And they said, you know, does this really compel anybody to do anything? And Mona's response, I thought was, I mean, she sort of said, oh yeah, we're working on that, but it was less than definitive to my non-lawyerly ear. I mean, I don't know whether signing this thing requires, compels Caltrain to do a damn thing.
Was there any way we could look at those, those funds that were funded for the T, the Transportation Authority and and where that money is that was authorized to be spent? Or it's about twenty-seven million dollars, I recall.
I think you'd have to check with the TA on that.
Welcome. Do you have any recollection of that?
I don't know. It should be in the agreement as a historical fact that was completely left out. Twenty-seven million bucks. I, I think somebody got something put over on it. By leaving it out.
Well, I was part of the, well, I mean, before we created the TA, I was on the expenditure plan committee. And a plan was developed to put all the money basically into roads and and then we formed a new, uh, new plan committee and we set out the priorities. We set out the projects to be funded and indeed, uh, removal of the center was part of that. Uh, the, the quad gates were part of that. And as a matter of fact, and Jim will remember this. I retired just a little bit too soon. But when I retired, it was in the budget. Both the limiting the holdout and the quad gates.
Well, the holdout, I don't know about the quad gates. A holdout station was definitely in there.
Well, and the other was in there when we put together the original plan. We set out what the priorities were. And so they were all part of it and it was, um, there was a feeling at the time that Atherton didn't really need these. They were a wealthy community and, and some of the comments were made that indicated. I think, and I both attended the meeting after I had retired from the board and the council. And, uh, one person in particular from Redwood City was the one really to gain that removed and but there's a whole lot more. It was in there. It was in the funny, we set the priorities and that was part of the committee that set those priorities and set the, the projects. Those have been ignored.
I remember that meeting, Malcolm, and I thought that what happened was that they defunded that.
Well, what I do know is it was in the budget and they took it out of the budget.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah.
Jim, you've been patiently waiting with the question. I know.
Robert, you said that there was some discussion at the council meeting and some changes were made. Is the draft that we have pre-changes without, without showing the changes that were discussed at the council meeting?
Yeah, so the, the draft that you have is what was presented to council for their discussion at the study session. As noted, um, there was a request by the council to tighten things up a little bit in certain areas, um, wherein, like you said, like was stated that there is a little bit of wiggle room in certain spots. So the request was to, to tighten things up so that there's a bit more of a guarantee.
Okay, well, that's sort of where my comments lie and I, I follow up on John's comments on this. I guess question is a good one. Is it how enforceable is memorandum, memorandum of understanding? That's what's always been used in my experience with public agencies. But I've always looked at it as sort of a, I don't know, glorified letter of intent. And, and, and letters of intent are sometimes enforceable and sometimes they're not depending upon how they're written. I, I think this one is written with the intent to be an enforceable agreement. But regardless, I mean, if, even if you say this is strictly enforceable, there's wiggle room in here. What concerns me the most is this one. First of all, they've got several years in which to build, to pay for the, the Watkins Avenue Crossing Safety Improvements, they call them. I take it that that's the quad gates. They've got three years to do that. And complete design in six months and build a construction within three years. Well, okay. That's better than nothing. It looks like it's, I, I don't know if it's five million dollars is an adequate amount. And, but it looks like that's a commitment to, to do that. But the other, the thing that concerns me more is what we're getting for giving up the stop. And it ought to be that the quad gates, there's, unless I missed it, I, I see nothing in here about a quiet zone. There ought to at least be a Caltrain commitment to not oppose any quiet zone. I guess the theory is that the quiet zone would be us to up, up to us, the town of Atherton to, to request just as we did in accomplishing the existing quiet zone that we have, which doesn't include Watkins, but we do have a quiet zone for part of the right of way. And, um, and I suppose the thinking is that once the quad gates ruin at Watkins and the station is gone, it would be up to, to the town of Atherton to pursue a quiet zone, which I imagine we would do. But there ought to at least be a commitment in here from Caltrain, I think, to say that they wouldn't oppose any such, such action. Not that they would be successful. They weren't successful and no one was successful in stopping the last quiet zone, but doesn't mean they want to try again. But the other thing that I think we ought to get for it is we ought to get the old station building and the right to, to use it and control it. And they've got it in here, sort of. It's the station building and a strip of land along the, uh, it's in the parking lot now, or what used to be the parking lot. That belongs to Caltrain and the rest of the, of the old parking lot belongs to the town. And so they, they outline this little strip. Here's showing where the station is. And they describe by, they define the property as that little strip of land, including the station and the improvements to be certain structural landscaping improvements is more completely outlined in exhibit B. This is, I'm looking at the maintenance and use agreement. An exhibit B to the maintenance and use agreement is just a drawing that shows that little strip along the tracks and where the station is and, and not much else. Then it says that, that Caltrain grants a license to the town to use that property and to construct and maintain the improvements on the property. I, I read that as meaning that it's going to be incorporated into the new civic center and we'll be using part of that property for something and landscaping it. And, and there's some talk about making the, uh, the existing station structure incorporating that in some way into the town center. And we have to maintain it. And that, that's what maintenance and use agreements all about. So they, but they grant us a revocable license to do that. And access and so forth. But then it goes on and it says that there are several conditions in, in probably of seven, several situations in which the railroad can immediately terminate the license if, if we default and so forth, which are, okay, those are standard. But, but then there's one that says town acknowledges that the railroad may conduct transit activities on, around, under, and over the property. And if, if the railroad concludes that they need to, to place restrictions on, or they need to obtain possession or place restrictions on town's use of the property with the capital P. They can give us ninety days notice of a surrender date and we have to surrender the property on that date or before if it becomes some sort of imperative that they, that they get it back immediately. And I read that as meaning they can, you know, they give us the access and use of the, the strip along the tracks and the station itself. And we can spend all kinds of money on landscaping and other improvements and incorporate it in as a nice, pretty part of the new town center. And then they can come along with some trumped up and I, and I, I don't have, I, I don't trust Caltrain as far as I could throw a locomotive. And I've dealt with them before for clients, uh, where I've seen them frankly breach agreements, right? Break just blatantly. Yeah. And they can come along and say they need this for some transit, uh, transit activities and take it back. And then we're, we spent a whole bunch of money, uh, and we can lose the whole damn thing. That's the part that really ought to be tightened up. Otherwise you, you, you got a big problem, big potential problem.
Yeah, Green, can I make some comments?
If it's in response to Jim's question, right now we're just doing questions. I'm going to open up the public comment, then we'll have committee comments up there.
I, I agree with Jim's comments. That's one of my concerns is, is the town protected against losing something in the future at the whim of Caltrain? And also related to the future is this agreement presumably is going to last forever until some, some significant thing causes it to change. And we don't know what the future is going to bring. One of the things it could bring is BART making a complete loop around the bay, including going through Atherton. And if that were to happen, I think we would want a Atherton BART station. Does this preclude that from happening? Another thing that may happen twenty-five, thirty years ago is high-speed rail might come through Atherton. And Atherton might want a stop of local Caltrain trains so that they could get from Atherton to wherever the nearest high-speed rail station is. So it seems to me that we're not getting anything at all out of this that can assure our future.
So I, I think, Robert, maybe the the, some of the trepidation, maybe including what Greg had, had mentioned earlier. Maybe pass it on to Mona as part of a general comment from the committee might be, might be worth, worth doing and ensuring we tighten up the language a little bit. I think the council also expressed a desire to also tighten up as much as possible of the M O U. So.
So we've taken direction from the city council at their meeting last week. And, um, things have been active in terms of pursuing some sort of, um, modi, some modifications to better address the council's concerns with Caltrain. And so that revised memorandum of understanding and maintenance and use agreement will be brought forward to council for their consideration.
Okay.
A follow-up on Jim's point, uh, you know, somewhere in there, Jim, there is a discussion of, uh, the train, the, uh, what was your point? I forgot the.
Quiet zone?
You know, there wasn't any language. There is some language on the point that you made. I just tried to remember what the point was.
Was it the quiet zone point?
Yes, the quiet zone. There is something in there that we're, the railroad is supposed to do. But the wording, I've tried to dig it out of my, I didn't find it. There is language in there. Do you know what it is? There are language for the quiet zone that what the railroads.
I found it. So if you look under public benefits, um, item number two F.
I think it's one F or is it two F? Oh, there is a.
Oh, wait, it's one F. I'm sorry.
And what does it say? I don't have it in front of me.
It says, uh, J P B shall work cooperatively with town to complete the following corridor in public benefits. Item F is cooperation with the town should the town elect to expand a quiet zone within town limits.
There's something in there, Jim.
The, the initiation of the quiet zone has to be a town action. It's not a railroad action. So we have to initiate it. Nerissa went all through the regulations that govern that last time. And that's one of the things that came out.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine. Then it's just my question on the quiet zone issue. Thank you, Greg.
Let me open it up for public comment. Are there any public comments?
Hi, this is Roland. So very quickly, I'd like to echo the, the comments I made at council with regards to removing the, um, the platform. Uh, the cost is only four hundred thousand dollars if they're just going to basically blow it up with a jackhammer and, um, and replace it with ballast. So the discussion about the twenty-seven to twenty-eight million dollars is really interesting. But the one thing I do want to bring to your attention though, is the high-speed rail draft E I R that discusses the, the Fair Oaks crossing. Because if they remove the platform, they're actually going to be able to realign the tracks, put them back closer together in the space that's currently occupied by the platform. And when they do that, that intersection of fair roads is going to become much safer. I don't know if any cars ever turned right onto the tracks, um, if they were heading towards Lloydton. After they crossed the first track, they thought they were gone and they could make a right turn. Well, that, that's going to put a stop to that because the two tracks are going to be side by side. Another advantage you should give you, I haven't timed it, is that if you reduce the distance between the gates from fifty-five feet down to thirty feet, which is the norm for the, the, the two-track crossings, you are going to reduce the gate downtime by about fifteen seconds. So instead of having a twenty-five second warning time, which is standard for thirty feet, it's, uh, right now you're getting, you're getting, probably getting forty seconds. If you're not getting forty seconds warning, there's something seriously wrong. And, um, and that's it. Thank you. Oh, one last comment. I assure you, you don't want BART there because BART maximum speed is ten miles an hour slower than Caltrain's current maximum speed because of your third rail. Thank you.
Thank you, Roland. Um, so let me open up for any committee comments.
Well, I don't know what it's worth, but my timing of the, the holdout, nineteen seconds is warning time right now. I've, I have a clocked it in a couple of months, but it's, the last time I, it's usually nineteen seconds. Between the time that the, the alarms go off and the train passes through the, the intersection. But I don't know what the significance of that is, Roland. You mentioned it being twenty-five seconds or forty seconds? But it's only nineteen.
So the, the way it works is for safety, they've got to allow a person with a disability to cross the tracks. You know, after the, uh, the light starts flashing. And the speed of travel of, of a, somebody with disability is one and a half feet per second. So if you have got thirty feet between the gates, it's twenty seconds and then they always add a five-second factor of safety and I'll forward the, all the technical stuff to BART and he can forward it to you. So at thirty feet, the warning time would be twenty-five seconds. Right now, there you go, fifty-five feet there. That's what I saw on Google between the gates, but I'm talking about Fair Oaks. I'm not talking about Watkins.
Right, I'm talking about.
You know, the others, the others are fine. They're probably going twenty-five, like everything has. Fair Oaks, I'm pretty sure it's got to be forty seconds to be safe.
Well, it's going at nineteen right now.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Jack Ringham.
Go ahead, Jack.
This sales tax measure for Caltrain, it's going to be on the ballot in November. I think it requires a two-thirds vote. And I think something similar that was proposed before and it didn't get two-thirds. And I, uh, think there's a chance that it wouldn't get two-thirds now. So that leaves Caltrain without any money to even operate. And also they've got this money for electrification. And I don't know if that money goes away if Caltrain doesn't get this funding to operate or if we're stuck with, uh, no trains at all. It seems to me there's a lot of uncertainty out there that, uh, you just can't deal. It seems to me there's a lot of uncertainty out there that you just can't deal with in a memorandum of understanding.
Robert, is, how much have they spent already? Do you have any feel for that?
Spent on what?
On the electrification.
They have, I don't know, they've spent quite a bit of money. I think as was indicated before, it's numbers that are, you know, with a B, if I'm not mistaken.
So they've spent that much, a billion dollars?
Well, I mean, they're under contract. So I mean, whatever they're obligated to expend under the contract is going to be part of that.
Well, their deficit isn't that large. I'm sure those three counties can dig a little deeper and keep it running. But I can't believe they let a billion dollar investment go down the drain for $27 million deficit.
I believe most of the money is coming from federal and state. So. And, yeah.
They've also got high speed rail money in there.
Yeah, yeah.
They've got 600 million from them.
So it's not necessarily the counties funding most of it. It's other public entities.
Well, the other two counties, but they're all, only the counties are funding it. Like, except for the, the capital expenditures.
Yeah, yeah. I, I thought we were talking about the electrification capital expenditures.
Right, right. But I'm talking about operations.
Oh, operation, yeah, yeah. Well, there's no electric trains yet. So. Are there any other comments? So I, I do want to say, I, I like the agreement myself personally. So I want to thank staff as well as council for putting together a, a good proposal. No, no proposal is perfect. There's always going to be, you know, some issues here and there, you know, it's a negotiation between two parties. But I, I think representing Atherton's interests, I, I think it does a pretty good job. So just my, my two cents. So moving on to item six, any committee member or staff comments?
How did the city council meet? Did any of us testify? I, I couldn't do it, but I just wondered with anybody else did testify at the city council meeting under the.
No, I, I sat through it, but I didn't say anything.
Yeah, I did the same.
How about you, Paul? Did you say anything?
No, I didn't say anything.
Malcolm, did you say anything?
No.
Wow, I'm surprised. You guys are, I guess you need somebody like me to make sure I get the.
We're very, we're very intimidated by the council. We don't like to express our opinions. Okay, if there's no, nothing else for item six, let me move on to item seven, public comment. Roland, did you have anything before we close?
So I just sent it to you. There were a bunch of questions. So the date for electrified service right now, as of last August, is July 2022. They're not going to make it. It's very unlikely they're going to make it in 2022 at all. With the, regarding to the other question about the capital expenditure, that information is found in the monthly P C report. I'm currently looking at it and I will forward the, the actual numbers handling to, to Robert, both for the electrification and for the M U as soon as I find it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So let's move on to item eight. Any future agenda items that a committee member wants to propose for our December meeting?
Yes, I think there ought to be some follow on with this M O U with Caltrain at that point and see what the final agreement looks like.
Okay.
Would you like me to check with Caltrain about in one of the upcoming meetings about getting an update from them on electrification?
Yes.
Well, we should, you know, with the, the results of that proposition are, are, we should probably get some input from them either way, whichever way it goes.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah. Yeah, so I, I wouldn't mind when they did present on electrification update, if they also gave an update on their station, the, if the M O U goes through, if both Atherton and Caltrain approve it, what the, their staff have planned for in terms of their progress on the M O U requirements.
Could imagine if R R doesn't pass, they're going to be pretty busy.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't have to be in December.
Be segregated depending on availability. Like I said, I can't guarantee that it will be at the next meeting, but we can work with them on trying to get some representation from them.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be December. I mean, I'm not particular to December. It could be February based on their availability, certainly. I don't know, Greg, if you had any preference, if you needed to hear from them in December or.
Well, I, you know, I think if, if it fails, I think it would be, we should, we should do it in December. If it doesn't fail, then I think you could wait till February.
We probably won't know that though, about maybe mid-November. I don't know if that's enough time.
We, we'd be coordinating with them on their availability, so.
It's got to be certified by the last weekend in November.
Yeah, yeah. But, but I mean, to then put together a presentation when they, when they probably haven't even planned for the, well, I don't know if they planned for the possibility. I, I think that would be difficult for them.
Well, it's, it's up to them. If they, they think it's too early, then we, but if they are ready to do it, then let's have, let them do it. You got them, we'll wait.
That's fair. That's fair. Okay. Any other future agenda items? Okay, if not.
This is, this is Roland. Can I make a quick comment?
We've closed that public comment period, so I don't think we take public comment on the future agenda items.
No, no, no. I found the numbers that Mr. Condon was asking for. They were on the next page.
On the budget? How much they spent?
It's, it's $776 million on the electrification and $240 million on the M U. So the total right now is over $1 billion and they've got $964 million left.
It's almost $2 billion project?
It's 1.980, 0.252, 0.533. Yeah.
They're halfway done.
That says they'll never finish it within budget.
Okay, thank you, Roland. Next meeting is December 1st. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. See you guys in December. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you everybody.